Sharing information. My name is Daniel Bender. I'm the acting chair. I hope if you have a community concern, I can hear you. Please speak to the mic when you're asked to come forward. I have a couple of issues. But I'm not going to call the meeting to order because we only have six people. This is a 15-member board. And we need eight people for a forum. So as soon as we get eight people, then I'm going to call it to order. Okay? Do we have a representative from HPD who would like to talk to us? Make a presentation.
Yes, good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District Four Community Police Team. I have the stats for the month of March. So in March, there was one motor vehicle theft versus five the previous month. There was one burglary in March versus zero the previous month. There were four reports of theft in March versus four the previous month. There were zero car break-ins in March versus one the previous month. There were zero robberies in March versus the previous month. And then as for the stats compared to last year, motor vehicle thefts were the same. There were four more burglaries last year. There were 10 more thefts last year. There was five more car break-ins last year and two more robberies last year. So a decrease in crime this year so far. And then as for the complaints from last meeting, so about the derelict vehicles between Hiake up here. Several of them were told by patrol and the rest left the area. And then we also checked on the homeless camps above the pier. And it appears that what we were told by someone in the area was that the homeless person living up there has met someone and is now living with that person. So that's good news. They're no longer homeless. And then as far as the complaint about dirt bikes and mopeds in the evening hours, we still haven't been able to address that, but it's still on our agenda. We're going to try and conduct an operation in the coming weeks for that. And that's all I have for the stats. Can I take any questions or concerns?
Going to take questions from the board first. Do you have any comments or questions for the HPD?
Yes, I do. I have been reporting this to the police. In fact, I saw one of the policemen today at the blessing of the stairway in Hiake. And I mentioned that to them about the homeless people in Hiake. Across the street on the highway side, there's people that's been living. There's one guy that's been living there for over two years now. So he comes back every night and sleep. I know there's drug action. My sons have seen drug action. No sense calling the police. I'm not saying that. By the time the police gets hold of it, police gets there, everything is gone. Because they come on bikes, motorcycles. They drop off, pick up whatever on motorcycles. Couple nights ago, like 2:00 in the morning, we had to kick out. My sons all got out. All of our motorcycles out of our driveway in Hiake. They were running their motorcycles and everything. We work. People in our home work. They get up like 4:00 in the morning to go to work. But every night at about 2:30, this one guy that's been living there for two years makes his own whip out of the haw trees. And he whips it like 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and echoes through the valley. wakes everybody up. We're just tired of it. And I wish that, you know, I said to go someplace else and do that and not almost every night disturb our people over there. And I'm sure the neighbors on the road here it do, but I don't know if they have complained. And the homeless camp, I mentioned it before. Back when I had a policeman came up there about the people in the homeless camp. It's getting more and more people. Just a few days ago, my granddaughter called the police because there was a truck taking a truckload of plyboards up to build a holly, I guess, back up in the mountains. But there's also one person that I know for sure is a petifier because the policeman told them already a year ago, go and don't come back. But I've been seeing him a few days now without a shirt on, hanging around the canoe club with kids. And we can't have people like that hanging around the canoe club with kids. Especially, we know for a fact that he raped somebody in his own family and that's why he went to jail. Now he's out. So can we do something about it? Mahalo.
Do you, so where specifically are these homeless camps? Because we were walking around the mountains. We couldn't find nothing. We found-
Directly across, directly across the Hiake on the Hia State Park. They have a couple trails even coming up on the Kako Oi Vi side. Kako Oi Vi has been working with the police department also because they've been coming down into the Kako Oi Vi farms.
Yes, we work with them. We communicate with them often. Yep, he lets us know when he's having problems. So we come up often. And we, so like I said, we did walk those trails. We walked all of them. We found several remnants of camps, but we haven't found any active camps. So I don't know what you're seeing. And then, so I did inquire about that person with the whip as well. He was not in the area. I was, I was told by someone over there that he's kind of left the area. But we can keep making checks if you're seeing he's still there. And then I would recommend, when you're seeing this, to call 911 at the time. And then we'll come and check because when we've been making our checks, we haven't been, you know, finding anyone or anything in the area.
Thank you.
Yep. And then, like I said, yeah, we're going to work on the, we're going to try and do a dirt bike operation as well. We've just been having to deal with other things at the time. But hopefully we'll do that within the next coming weeks. We're going to do enforcement on dirt bikes and mopeds.
We asked, we have legal hunters from Kako Oi Vi that goes in there. So we asked them to take pictures. Mahalo. If help-
Yeah.
Rick Calas question.
Wanted to express our deepest appreciation for all that you folks do as police officers. It's a very difficult world that we live in right now. And I think oftentimes it's hopeless for you folks. So my question to you is, what could lawmakers do to improve this situation for you?
I don't know. LT, you want to take, could you take that one? I'm not, I'm too sure. We just need more, we need more recruitment. That's all we need. We just need more officers.
Yeah, staffing, sorry Lieutenant U with Night Watch. Staffing is always going to be an issue. The amount of new officers that come out of the academy far is below the number of officers that retire every year. So the city has implemented a new program for recruits to get potential bonuses. That should help, but only thing I can think of is budget increases for the department would help a lot because they seem to cut our budget every year. And other than that, if you know people who are qualified and you think they would be good officers, we are always hiring. HonoluluPD.org is the website to find out more information about recruitment. But as you said, in today's political and social climate, it's not a job most people want to do, unfortunately.
Mahalo. Godspeed to you.
Thank you, sir.
To order, we now have eight people. So the meeting of the Honolulu Neighborhood Board tonight is officially called to order on April 10th at whatever time, whatever time it is. So last time around, are there any more questions from board members? Go ahead.
Do you know what the status on that pedestrian accident was last week? On Wahe'ee Road?
I'm not sure if I was working that night, but once we conclude our investigation, it goes to the traffic division if any follow-ups are needed.
What I heard was a young child got zapped. It's just during the, early in the morning, school time.
Oh. I wouldn't have any information. I work on it nighttime, sir.
And then LT, I can tell you that. So our sergeant with Community Police has been in talks with the Department of Transportation. I know they're, they're in their planning phases for putting speed tables in that area. So I know the planning is, they're having meetings about it already. So it's, it's in the works. As far as that accident, I, yeah, I don't know the status on that one.
Have any comments from the public? Any questions for HPD? The next business in order is Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from Honolulu Fire Department?
Good night.
Thank you. I have anyone from Honolulu Fire Department. We're moving on. The next business in order is the filling vacancies. Ed has come tonight to fill a vacancy in the Hui Manu area. Would you like to rise and introduce yourself to the gang? Tell us your address. I think you're in Sub District Five.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ed Ige. I'm from Hui Manu area here by the loop. And let's go through to the board. My background, Kalii, third generation. Thank you by the CPA. For, for we have
Why Did He Troll? We would love to have, we have a motion from the board to nominate Ed to the, to our board. Second, can we take a two-minute break so we can swear you in and you can join us at the, up here? We are going to swear him in, so that gives us one more. So we're going to take a two-minute, three-minute break. Thanks, Ken.
Hey, Dan. This is Ken. Dan, this is Ken.
We are in recess. We're just swearing in a new member.
Right. Can I, I can't come there. Can I talk to you real fast? Did, did we get, was there any announcement that we got a new Cisco program?
Hold on. We will get to it. Anyone else who would like to be on the neighborhood board from Sub District Five? Calling the meeting back to order. Is there anyone else who would like to be on the neighborhood board from Sub District Five?
Aloha. My name is Hiaka Jardine. I live on Hui Ulili Street and I would love to join the Honolulu Neighborhood Board.
We just haven't had two vacancies.
Awesome. Mahalo.
Would someone like to nominate Hiaka for the neighborhood board? We'll take another couple of seconds to swear you in and then join us up.
I turned that. Bring her back on. That was just me saying I support that. Hi, Daniel.
Everyone's information, it's very important. The first thing that we do is to make sure that anyone who would like to be on the board, join the board. We're 15-member board. We have eight people for a forum. Have a tonight, but it makes it much easier. Stay in the game. Anything but possible.
Dan, we cannot hear you virtually. We cannot hear you.
Other people in the, in the front of us who would like to be on the board? I don't see a vacancy. It's, oh, I do. Yes, indeed. Please introduce yourself.
Aloha, my kaka. Dasima feina iko iinoa. I am returning to the board in Sub District Two as a regular board member, non-executive member. Mahalo.
Would someone like to nominate? Aki.
I'd nominate a second something.
And we have another one. We have another. Very, very good. So the candidates for office in the neighborhood board take an oath to follow the laws, the sunshine laws and also the city charter. Would you care to join us at the table? Like to put all three candidates up for election at the same time. Please indicate by raising your hand that you're in favor of the candidates who would like to join the neighborhood board. All in favor?
Sorry. So the, for the neighborhood plan, we actually need to call by their last name.
So it's unanimous. We have everybody.
I know, but it's, that's the proper way.
Would you like to call out the names? We're going to nominate, we've nominated three. We're going to elect three new members. Two from Sub District Five and one from, I'm sorry, two from, yeah, Sub District Five and one from Sub District Two.
So for Sub District Five, that was Ige, right? Got to do the wrong couple. Bender. Yes, Ige, okay. And then, Kalii Wa. For Ige. The Vassar.
All right.
All right. Can I have people say Ige with the last name? Just for, so we don't have to repeat it again. Thank you. Lu. Arthur. Arthur, you're unmute. Welcome back to you. Masterson.
Welcome aboard, Ige. Thank you.
Rapun.
Hi, Ige.
Powell.
Hi.
For Ige. Thank you.
For Ige.
And then could I have Arthur put himself on unmute?
He's, he's trying to figure something out. He's looking very seriously at his monitor.
Hold on. Art, would you raise your hand to sign?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, that works.
Very good.
Okay. So we'll have Ige for filling the Sub District Five. And Jardine was for the Sub District Five as well, right? Okay. We'll start with the vote again.
Jardine?
Kalii Wa. The Vassar.
Jardine.
Lu. Arthur, can you raise your hand for Jardine if you want to vote for her? Arthur. Welcome back. Masterson.
Hi, welcome back, Jardine.
Rapun.
Jardine.
Powell.
Jardine.
Then Arthur. Can you raise your hand if you wanted to vote for Jardine?
Art, raise your hand in the monitor. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, that's all eight members here. Great. Well, Jardine. And then for Jesse, Sub District Two, right? Okay. Bender. Kalii Wa. Thank you. The Vassar.
Hi.
For Jesse. Lu. For Jesse again. Arthur.
Raise your hand again, Art.
Thank you. Masterson.
Hi, welcome back, Makati Nani.
Rapun.
Jesse.
Powell.
Jesse, welcome back.
Okay, thank you. That's all eight members for Jesse.
Any other people who are interested in serving on the neighborhood board to represent Sub District Six? Okay, we'll do that next month. So if you know anybody in that area who would like to join us, please, please. Yeah.
I want to thank Makapastadas who's standing in the back, who was willing and able and stepped up what was in the strong Sub District. We're not going to let you go.
We move on to the election of officers. We need to have a secretary for sure. Is there anyone who is interested in serving who is now on the board to be the secretary? Basically, your job is to look over the mail, answer the mail, share it with all of us, be in touch with our neighborhood assistant. Okay, do we have anyone? Nobody, nobody yet. Okay. We tried. Jiro, welcome. Mayor's representative. Thank you for coming. How was your trip? You had a-
Aloha, Chair. Jiro Smada, Deputy Director, Department of Planning and Permitting. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I'm Elo visiting my mom. And because of that trip, I may have to move the scenes, but I'll talk about that later. The mayor's update. A carryover from last month, HK Development Percolation Test. Ken LaVassar was concerned about. So there's two properties, 47145 by Le Hua Road and 47149 by Le Hua Road. Question was how did they get a percolation test done in that property? How did they get a permit? Failed the percolation test for the septic, septic system. So this is a response from DPP that please contact Department of Health Wastewater Branch. Number is 808-586-4294. They regulate individually-owned wastewater systems. That's the appropriate agency to follow up with. There's a potential failure of their wastewater system. Next question was from John Hoon about the special design districts. He asked, he'd like more information on how he can establish a special design district for Kanaui. And he'd like to help address the following issues related to development, brawl, wastewater cesspools and other issues. So this is kind of a long response. I'll kind of read through it. We can shorten it. And so this is from Art Department, Planning and Permitting. Thank you for the question on special design districts and how they might address development, wastewater cesspools and other issues in Kanaui. From the request, it's not clear the special design district is appropriate tool as explained below. So the purpose of a special design district is to provide a means by which certain areas may be given special guidance in order to protect or enhance a physical or visual aspects of an area for the benefit of the community as a whole. The primary tool of the special design, of the design district is design controls for development on private property. For example, Punch Bowl Special District has the objective of preserving the park-like character of the slopes of Punch Bowl in the surrounding area. This is achieved through design controls related to lower height, smaller building area, unobtrusive architecture, bigger required yards, more landscape. These design controls are different than standard rules to help protect the prominence of the Punch Bowl and the National Memorial Cemetery. With this in mind, your question seems to be more concerned about with development in general and infrastructure. Special design districts are not well-adapted to help address these issues since they primarily deal with form and shape of private development and not infrastructure. You may be thinking of a special improvement district in the revised ordinance of Honolulu's Chapter 28. It's a good reference. Or a community facilities district. However, this would require further review of which, of which we are unable to comment. Should you wish to pursue a special design district with DPP and amendment to the land use ordinance, revised ordinance is Honolulu Chapter 21 would be required. And we would be happy to discuss this review in more detail. You can contact, contact Alex BD at the Urban Design Branch at DPP. And his email is A B E A T T Y. I'll send it to you. At Honolulu dot gov. The full number is 808-768-80K.
Jiro, if I may, a real quick question. See, if you wish to pursue a special design district, it sounds like that may not be the right fit of special improvement district, right? What if we wish to pursue something?
So now, I'm not too familiar with the improvement district out of, out of go about doing that. In my experience, the improvement district dealt with subdivisions that didn't have full infrastructure. And then they would gather together their whole subdivision and they would partner with the city and create a special fund that just this group would be paying in to, to actually contribute to improving infrastructure like sewer or road that, that didn't exist or that needed improvement. So I'm not totally familiar with how to go about doing that. Maybe when you come, when you come talk to Alex. Because I think it sounds like it's a mixture of both. You know, the improvement district, I mean, the special design districts that we have, one is the example was Punch Bowl. You know, and that is it's to protect the views from the Punch Bowl Cemetery, National Memorial Cemetery, looking out across the horizon. So there's special design requirements about that. And then even Waiki Key Special Design District, that's another one where you cannot just even paint your buildings a certain color. It needs to be approved and there needs to be kind of a Hawaiian or native Hawaiian motif when there's new development that happens vacant property in Waiki Key. So there's all kinds of different design rules that are in addition to the normal rules required for building permits.
I appreciate you responding and, and obviously this is, I think a lot of thinking. I go back to when I was mentioned many times, things like the Palaan Water Shin work plan. Which brings together federal, state and county. Because obviously all these is, there is a jurisdiction really got to come together. I mean, you're, you're being asked to look at things like percolation tests for HK developments and Department of Health needs to be out there. Discuss that. We actually need a big round table where all these entities are there so that they can address their own jurisdiction. So, well, unfortunately, conversation.
Do we have any other questions for Jiro? You're a, or in your report.
Yes. Okay, the this is kind of a long one. Well, this is another one from John, but a guard rail on Kamehameha Highway going a hook bound past Hiakeha by utility phone eighty and E. And portion of the Makai side that there is a drop-off. Interest. But, and that concern was actually brought up several months ago. Let me, there's some, so the previous update was that from DTS, Department of Transportation Service. Uh, they completed their investigation and found a guard rail is warranted along this section of Kamehameha Highway. So then DTS made a referral to Department of Design Infrastructure where their evaluation incorporated into our budget. So, from the, from DDC, uh, they have, they have a, a guard rail rehabilitation project. And that will resurface Kamehameha Highway from three hundred feet north of AS stream to Pahakili Highway. The guard rail request is within the project limits and will be included in the project. But they estimate the construction start of that project to be four or five years away from now. Or, I mean, it's not like they're doing nothing. They're, they're doing other parts of the items. Okay, now, then, uh, so there, the DDC is gonna add this section, the guard rail, the new guardrail. So. Department of Facility Maintenance have asked, uh, DDC's assistance in assessing the installation of water-filled barriers at the damaged guard rail location in the interim. So the, the designing construction engineers have to go out. We saw shoot pictures of the area, the drop-off. They need to have a certain amount clear space or land that those water-filled barriers can sit on. So that they don't fall out into that. For the end. There are portions of that section that can accommodate, uh, the water-filled barrier. But we've seen some closest to the, where the guard rail was found. I don't know. But, but, you know, I'm not the engineer that's from the system. So DDC, designing construction, those engineers are gonna go to a site visit to assess is it safe to put up the water-filled barrier? So I think they're gonna come back with some sections, yes. But others, they might, they might just put up a A frame barrier visual warning. So you have some protection, but not totally that water-filled barriers for temporary interim protection. Good? That's it? Uh, I can take any? No one? Yeah. Are there any other questions from the neighborhood board members? Yes.
Yeah, going back to the s- city. They didn't have the job cleaning Kamehameha Highway. Hiakeha, just before the the bridge. Looks like they only own cut trees, but they're not cleaning sidewalks.
Well, the sidewalks is not.
They never touch it. Still, they're driving on a wooden chair, still gotta have hubble on the road.
Where was? From where to where?
Actually, Kamehameha Highway. Kamehameha Highway, actually, they can start from Haiku Road, come all the way down. Because I don't know about some place maybe only six inches of asphalt. Everything's all weed. After the, after the bridge come around to it's all dirt.
It's you, you're saying never clean sidewalk?
They haven't done it.
But it's, uh, is it, uh, cutting the, the shoulders, the grass shoulders? Is that, yeah, well, that's what you mean?
It's on the sidewalk.
Or his side?
It's, it's on the sidewalk. Did you go there? You cannot find the sidewalk.
Okay.
That it. We have a question. Any other questions? Board members? Yes, right.
Just script has mentioned my area. I'm gonna mention his area. Um, the, um, canoe club. And the people that, I happen to be on the board, one of the board directors in the canoe club. They did a lot for the community, cleaning up that area. And they've been asking for a roof on the canoe hale for a long time. Because while the kid, while the, the students are waiting to get on the canoe, they normally do their homework. When it rains, they cannot do their homework, and even in the hot sun. So can the city, it needs approval, putting a roof there because they can't put a roof on it, but they need the permission. Yeah, can it? I'm talking about the Piahe Akahoi Canoe Club.
Next, I need a period.
The roof that went to the last, what's it called? And then coming, uh, they need, it needs a permit to do it. It's not asking the city to pay for it or the city to do it, but they need the city's permission to put a roof on the hale.
Very good. Do you have a question online? Does anybody, okay.
The, like, okay, John.
On follow-up.
I, I agree, they, they need that roof blown up. We get update plans for that whole section of park. Parking area, canoe. Need any updates? So that as we're looking at replacement of that roof, we're not going comfortable with city may plan.
Mahalo, Regional Park. Yeah, Kai question. Rocky has a follow-up.
I'm gonna continue with my section after, my, my district after. Okay. And now in my district, explaining to you, the Kakoa Ivy has been helping to clean the sidewalk in Hiakeha. And, uh, the, the Hiakeha, something I'm talking about with, uh, we brought up the po- the problem of the homeless people there, and I think it's on city property. City needs to really look at it. Because we have, um, legal, um, hunters from the other side of Kauahe that went in and said there are encampments there. And you gotta do some hiking to go there. But luckily, that's, this past week, my granddaughter called the police because people were taking actually lumber to build a house up there. So I think the police got, got them in time after not taking lumber up and building a house up there. But it's become a real problem in the city highways, right on Kamehameha Highway. There's a homeless guy that's been there like two years. During the day, he's gone. But most of the day, but in the night, he's there. But if you look on the beach area, he's also built, um, um, barricades over there. And if you walk at night, it's very dangerous.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so what can the city do about that? You were supposed to walk, you were supposed to do a walk to, they're gonna call me, never did the walk to. And then another thing is the sidewalk. How many years have you been working on the sidewalk? From the pier to the bus stop across the street. It's almost ten years, I think. When did the side, how many more years did it take? I'm sure that's a take, uh, four years for a sidewalk.
Pier to bus stop.
Uh-huh.
Any other board? Okay, any questions from the public? Is this a question or an announcement? Vote for it. Is your question? Hey, Chair, can I answer that?
So, uh, the, in actuality, that, I think the concern that John Rappun brought up about special district is, is more about coordinating the different government agencies to plan for Kanaui area. It, it's not so much that I'm, okay, you correct me if I'm wrong now. You're not that, uh, that concerned as how houses look or a shopping center looks or is the color of buildings as opposed to what, uh, is different government agencies, state, federal, and city doing to plan for the community for the future? So it's, it's the Waikiki, the Waikiki, the Punch Bowl and the other special districts that DPP managed. What we talked about was aesthetics and, uh, in order to protect or enhance the physical or visual aspects of an area benefit the community as a whole. So that's, it's kind of a narrow focus, but I think what a member of Rappun is asking about is a broader picture of actually are the government, federal, state, and city governments have a broader look at overall planning as far as what development is gonna happen within this area. So, but maybe John needs to clarify that.
If I could, if I could just weigh in a little bit. By the way, the reason why we have a green and brown combo is because we, we, one of the steps. But I'm really talking about function. So when you say the form, an English major, interpret those words very privately. Form needs to, needs to go. We have health and safety issues as a result of our septic systems not working, our ground saturating. So adding more, more cesspools and more development in exacerbates the problem. So. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think that's something to work out. I, I do know that there's overlapping jurisdiction between state, county, and federal and things like posters of management for infrastructure. So a wise way to approach it, not in sense. Get all levels of government playing. There are vehicles to do that.
Very nice. You have more, Jiro, your report?
No, that's all. I just have an announcement. So, um, today is my last meeting with the Kahalo Board. So, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, gonna leave the city and I accepted a new job with my old engineering company. Uh, and, and the reason is, when I went home to Hilo in March, uh, I was visiting my mom. You know, like ninety-four. Won't be ninety-five, but anyway, uh, it kinda hit me that, okay, I need to spend some time. And, uh, I go home twice a year, maybe a week at a time, you know? You know? I need to, although I'm enjoying myself at the city and, you know, doing this, uh, job. But, uh, I need to spend time.
And be very best.
Oh, thank you.
Follow in addition to part of Chalakon?
Oh, yes.
Was able to. Had any influence on your success? Somebody knows about, right? So, it's an issue.
Yeah, I don't know who ac- actually is gonna the neighborhood board actually is. They're the ones that gonna sit like my back there. But anyway, I just wanna thank you folks. I got to meet all you folks and it's great working with you and, I mean, we had lively conversations and I hope we worked on most of the issue, maybe not all, but anyway, at least we got dialogue, communication.
We have one more question, mine, and question. Ian, anyone? Ken?
Yes. I'd like to thank Jiro for the, uh, great effort he put in for our community. We really, really appreciate it. Uh, you, you did a fabulous job and we hope we can get half the effort out of your replacement that you gave us because you gave us your all and we really, really appreciate it. Mahalo.
Thank you, thank you.
We're moving on.
Oh, yes, we're, go ahead.
I just wanted to express my mahalo to you, Jiro. It's a wonder that you've done such a great job because you come from Hawaii Island. All the good folks come from Hawaii Island.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jiro.
We're gonna move on in the agenda. Need to raise your hands, Michael.
Oh, please speak on the mic. Thank you.
So the hale at the corner, the end of the highway, Kamehameha Highway, um, Nicole Schussinger did put in a request, they did go to, um, for permitting. Was, were they given a permit? I would just like to let this become, before you got.
They're, they're, no, they haven't been given a permit yet. They're, they're, they've applied for SMA permit and that's going through the system. So.
Special management?
Special management here, yes. That's sort of planning commission.
So can somebody give us an update on that SMA, um, at the next meeting?
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Jiro. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're moving on. Councilmember Esther Kine will not join us. She hasn't represented either. Uh, but Matt Wire is represented by Tani Lte, would you like to? Sorry. Right.
Chair of members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Myers.
Thank you.
So you guys, first. Just a couple of things. To, uh, recognize winners of the twenty twenty two. Actually, whether it's on competition. I'm sorry, because the Haini Vadas national competition is eight to that's what was going on to importantly, not sure what it is. Legit, uh, game, especially guys, it's gonna be hard in legit season. Also, remember, did put in amendments to more, um, eighty-three thousand for the position that he offered, the climate change, uh, statement. Just to watch the maintenance, actually. Our immigration services and education, uh, consistent same office to address, uh, issue related services and education. Um, hopefully, this will be up for a second meeting, for possible. Well, updates. Regarding the wetland and marshes, um, yard still getting a course of need that's still going on. So I did, I still have to reply to it, but I still need to do that.
Kelly. Sorry, sorry. Um, the people online, um, they're asking if you can move the mic, uh, towards you because they're unable to hear.
The bits, hold over.
Yeah. Is that better? Is it good? Yes, thank you.
Uh, and then I know this is not actually from this board, but, um, we're making complaints about Kahalo. Thing, uh, so we, I know my predecessors are working on that. Uh, I'm still trying to figure that out as well. Just waiting to see what options E and B, the environmental services, that's responsible for trash pickup, what that says they want. Thinking for that time. And, uh, I was told Kula Beach Park, kitchen upgrades are being done right now. I was, any questions for councilman?
More questions? Go ahead.
Um, I know that last week, the zoning committee had the hearing on the SMA permit. Um, and I know councilmember Wire voted in opposition to that, so we just wanna mahalo him for referencing our correct. That's the same one that anti-Raki was referencing. So we just wanna mahalo him for, um, just being in line with the community and what they would like to see. And, um, pushing for that cultural, oh, sorry, the archaeological inventory study. Um, can we also ask him for a cultural impact assessment? If that could be added to the requirements for the SMA? Mahalo.
Any other board questions? Go ahead. Question, John?
Kelly, going back to the, um, what is it?
Well, we are. Although, I'm sorry.
Sis here. Um, what was the measure that is moving through for both position and
For the position, yeah.
And salary and so on?
Well, I, I believe for the position, that, that is for the salary.
Okay. Ken, can I, I, I would, would love to get more information about that.
Okay.
Because when I look at something like that, being an English major, again, I'm gonna stress that watershed to look at health of the watershed.
Ian has a question?
Thanks.
Ian, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, I was a little broken up. Um, what did you say? They were doing sewer improvements at Kula Regional Park. Um, I was there today and saw a big pile of sand and, um, and then the workers work in Makai of that kind of middle bathroom there that's closer to the water. That is a really, uh, that's actual very sensitive cultural area that's in, uh, recognized kind of habitation zone where that sand dunes are higher. Is that, are they working there and is there a monitor, anything culturally, archaeologically speaking? Do we know?
Um that I'm not sure. I'm gonna have.
Okay, but that's what it is. They're doing the sewer. They're they were cutting, you know, they obviously dug where there were pipes and they were cutting the pipes, but um.
But no, I they I they're not doing the sewer. They're doing uh. Kitchen upgrades that are near the um interior pavilion.
Kitchen upgrade, that's far from where I'm talking about, yeah. Okay, I don't know. They were doing some work out there um along the eastern edge.
Yeah, that'll have to look. I'll have to look into that.
Any questions?
On that, let us know what they're doing and if they have appropriate um monitoring or anything going on over there. There's a lot of sand piled up, so they're doing digging. Thank you.
On the board.
Yeah, getting back to that Kalaya trash dump there. What can everybody's people's need?
Um so actually, E and B did go out and they're they actually went through the trash bags. They cited two NOBs. Uh it's kind of funny because the person that was actually calling in the complaints is the one that was doing all the dumping. And then um, you know, I hate to say it. I know the community doesn't want to hear it, but a lot of the illegal bulky dumping, you know, that's from the community. One of the one of the uh. Oh, yeah, because I'm not going.
Uh can that be allowed to speak in answer?
Um but uh one of the other NOBs came from property across the street near the um, it's called a team store, somewhere around there. Um they are monitoring it. I spoke to the inspector last week. Um he does make periodic checks um weekly. Um so we're just trying to figure out where uh or what they want to do next. I know there were talks about installing the camera. Um but that was going to be on that private property. Um but of course, that is full other issues. So. I'm just trying to follow up with my predecessor, what they kind of worked on and to see what he wants to do next. I know that they're supposed to be putting their trash in septic bins. But one of the other issues that might possibly raise is, you know, you figure two, average two cans per house, you're looking at a minimum of sixteen cans and then it's all right there. Uh so I I'm not sure, but we I am working on it. I know it's a site everything will go out to.
Because on that note there. I. Who as a person, she got the video. Taken, they're offloading their truck and the city is picking them up on our end. Two trucks sitting right by each other, one city and one private contractor.
Sorry, wait, what?
The contractor is uploading his truck.
Contractor is dumping. Most of there.
Yes, that's from his job, job site guy. And the city is picking it up on their truck on the same day. Yeah. And it's, when I look at that, I said, how? How dumb can they get?
Your question.
You know, because.
I hope that's not the question.
No, I I I'll go answer for the video. Because it's plain as day, you get the cities. They're leaving the city logo right on the truck. And a company vehicle with the name on the door.
Well, the person that has the video that they turned that into, Ian?
Well, this big, this problem was going on for years already. It's not, I mean, it's not a new thing.
Right, but you have to turn it into Ian. I I've never seen that before. And this is the first I'm hearing of it. So the city truck is literally waiting right there, waiting for the contractor to dump his trash and he's taking it, is what you're saying?
Yeah. The contractor uploading. And the city is picking them up.
What is the contractor's name?
You really want to know? Pakale Construction. Pakale. Ev- everybody, how's that? Go everywhere. We're not doing that.
So on the on the heels of your report, thank you for looking into that, but Member Lebassar and I have asked for years, twenty years' work. Um consideration of a transfer station because the nearest transfer station is Kapahore and or Laiea. And that would save a lot of effort on the city's part and it would prevent a lot of this action if we had. Transfer, simple transfer station. Mahalo.
John has a question. More of a comment. Um so. Part of the problem begins there. Because there are a whole bunch of houses on private road that don't have front kitchen. Maybe a highway. So I don't think they have city. Recycling or trash acceptables. And Lebassar?
Um yeah, in fact, the transfer station is recommended in the city plan for Kahalu. Okay, take note, the city plan says we need a transfer station in Kahalu.
I'll have to look into that.
Thank you, thank you.
The last last administration was not very fond of our community.
Yeah, we got that down. Thank you. Um we're gonna move on to Barry Yusagawa, who was here. The water supply Barry Yusagawa, who is always at our meetings, never misses.
Hello, everybody. Uh hi there. I just have um a one uh one general announcement. It's the Detective League Week. Um April fourteenth to the twentieth, so it's time to chase down those those pesky leaks and repair them. We have once again partnered with Hardwood Hawaii. For the annual Detective League Week campaign. And it's um. Campaign is an annual reminder to check your plumbing fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. One of the most common, of course, is the leaky toilet, and that's just the uh five dollar um. Flapper that you can get at Hardwood Hawaii or City Mill. Um die tablets are available at satellite city halls, or you can just put food coloring in the in the tank, and if you see it in the bowl, then there's a leak. Um I still like to mention that there is a, you know, we have a water sensible rebate for. Uh a number of these efficient plumbing fixtures, but the one I want to um highlight this month is called smart meter monitors. And these are devices that. Uh can strap on to the uh in the pipeline that's uh external to the external to the house on the outside. Um before it goes into the house. Um and they are able to, some of them just strap on, some of them you have to get a plumber to. You know, cut into the pipe and install it. Um the ones that cut in have a shut off valve. They um need to wire this connection. It ties to your to your smartphone. Uh and it can tell you. How your home is using water. And alert you if um it detects um some fixture that keeps that that's still on. Um so I just want to mention that you can get more information at our website, waterwatersupply.com, or just Google the Water Sensible Rebate Program. And that's my report for this one.
Board of questions for Board Water Supply, anybody? Any questions from the public? Is this an announcement or a question?
Uh question. Uh Barry, over the years, been approaching you about uh the the agency about what can be done to conserve water and the big last thing I approached was about. Uh water being served at restaurants. And you're uh there's supposedly an ordinance that's been in existence for a number of years that uh they have to ask and not just serve water at restaurants. And yet it is. Excessive what they say and waste, and you know we got a problem. So what question? What can you and or the other political, you're not a political, the politicians listening uh can do to enforce this to conserve our natural resource?
Mahalo, thank you.
Thank you. So that's in our rules and regulations um tied to serving water upon request. Uh it's really the um, it's not, it's not just the water that's in the cup, but it's the water used to wash the cup. So. It's supposed to be served upon request. I believe it's during um the summer months, but I'll I'll check. If you can let me know which restaurants that you see that are not um asking patrons, give me a list and I can have our communications contact them directly.
Okay, at the mayor's meeting last year. Oh, no, I'd have to name more. We'd be here for a very long time. I have contacted, I've in fact, whomever gave me the contact number, cut me off. Okay, uh so. I don't I don't know what it can I do it to you? I don't want to do it to you personally. I'm gonna give me a break. But um the system is not working. It's not. So please.
Any public questions for Barry Yusagawa or the Board of Water Supply? Anybody online for Barry? Yes, Joe, I'm sorry, Rick, Tom.
Barry, I was looking online right now and I can't find that. Where did you say we have to look for that water conservation device?
It's um a website, borderwatersupply.com. And then you search for water sensible program. It's under the residential rebate. So it's a smart uh water monitor. Um. I'll send you a link on email.
Thank you, thank you.
Mahalo.
Okay.
We're on to the governor's representative. Katie Ducat will not be with us. She sent us some regrets. Senator Bretton Waugh is her representative for the president. Senator Benton. There he is. Welcome.
Well, how bored? Brought my team in tonight. Uh if I could introduce Samantha Decourt, current manager. Montana Lewis right there. Put your name on it, go away. The real one. Elizabeth, we can go Elizabeth, but we lose street cred for that because she's tall and her, she was my pet's. Um uh Jesse Rivera, Jesse Montana. All here, answer whatever questions you guys want. Make it real real quick. There's a lot that I could download with you guys. I don't know what you guys want to know about.
Thank you for the trees. Thank you for the trees.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. So we just came from there. Um I'm watering it. I can start with that. Um. It's been a while since I announced how we're taking care of it. We just got a MOU uh this week from a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Transportation. I had to take personal responsibility because the state. Uh doesn't want any liabilities, so for us to find these trees, it falls on. Individuals, whoever is pushing this case, it's me where I was trying to keep on a holling. Um I read that some of the. Uh not concerns, but what was it? Some notes from our last meeting about the potential multi-use path. We wanted to put something like that in. We didn't have the resources to do it. Uh so, you know, the typical way is that you ask government. Wait for the DOT or whoever it may be. Um with the trees, wouldn't have had it in ground, have we waited? So we've kind of. So same same type of case, you know, on in Kahuku, um they're trying to get a park. And they don't have the money for the park, but there was a entity that was putting up three and a half million dollars that are more matching. And so that's how the mayor went over there. It was a tight state. Yeah, we can we can throw in some money and get that parked. So. Well, that's a lot of information, but back to this, you know, if we do want that multi-use path, connect Temple Valley, uh it's a hygienic store over here, which we're fully supportive. Um if you guys could have conversations amongst our businesses or whoever may have. Resources that we can then have those conversations with the Department of Transportation and that. Uh we had a meeting with the DLNR. Uh I believe Sam addressed that. Their uh second in command is is getting confirmed by the Senate. I'm not sure exactly when that's going to come up, but our initial conversations with that person, we made it very clear that. Uh we would not support any increases to uh well, any any kind of. Payment for parking at Heyakia Pier. So Heyakia Pier was in the pipeline. Um it was kind of deep in the pipeline, what, fourth? Third, okay, so there's a there's a spot on Hawaii Island. There was another spot on Waianae. And then it would have been Heyakia Pier, told them a rain falling for you if you put in put in this stuff. So they got back to us today, this week. And said they're not gonna have fees. So uh we also had a discussion with them. Um it's just a discussion of plans or anything. There's an initial discussion. About um the canoe club. I'm not sure Rocket, we're talking about that one or Kaia Havaianas, I was outside. But um. We had a discussion with the DLNR because there's already plans at city level um for that area, the long-term plans of moving that road back in and sort of asking to learn, hey, if that happened, can we get that? Extend uh the pier, extend the state park, all that park. It's a discussion that we can have. It's a discussion they were open to, especially because the canoe club almost no more anything for them to be on. Um. Well, the cesspool bill, if you guys, uh this is this is random, but cesspools. Uh obviously, you know, right over here, they polluted, it's a big problem, there's no solution. Um. Last session at the beginning of it, it was a high priority. This session after Lahaina, I rarely heard of it. I was surprised at the news call that they wanted to do a story. Um about one of the bills I voted no to, it was twenty four to one in the Senate. Um and that bill, it's it's probably gonna pass. And it's partially good, it 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 the what number is it? In case anybody wants to know, I'll get you that out there. HB twenty seven forty three.
Is that the bill that I suggested you got a fund to help people?
No, 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 that one never go. This, actually, Jared, Senator, oh, we have, right? That bill, and so we signed on to that. I don't know. I don't think it went. The one that, there are several vessels, but one of them that um passed, the news just did a story with John. I didn't see the story. But it was on that bill and what that bill would have done is look at areas to make the county look at areas to prioritize for expanding the sewer systems. Um but in that bill, the reason why we voted no is because if you voted yes and passes, well, next July, June or July, counties would be able to look at charging a fee. If you have a cesspool. And so, you know, we know that of ninety percent of the people who have recesses, they can't convert, so why are we gonna charge them fee which they can't even afford to convert it back? So we voted no, we're only one. I don't know how the story came out, but that was what news out.
Any board questions? Go ahead.
Two questions. Those are Brendan, all for coming. First question is. You know, the State Historic Preservation Division's office, they're so far behind. On projects that they need to look at, and that includes a lot of. You know, homeless. Projects and, you know, housing kind of projects. But somebody from your Senate delegation will talk to Dr. Nevo at there. She's a very capable, very smart woman and. And she's gonna get burned out and quit, but there's so much turnover there because and lots of stress. Um. Would you find out? I mean, that would be a place to be able to put more money, pay 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 people more, that kind of. That's item number one. Item number two is um. Would you folks consider during the summer something going and having a comprehensive look at the insurance industry and avoid it? Because it's a runaway train. For those of us that abide by the law and we we purchase our automobile insurance, now we're gonna get saddled with a two hundred dollar a year more increase because of that percentage of the population. I I ventured to say it's thirty percent. That by law, everyone's supposed to have insurance, but because they don't have insurance, then we're forced forced to get riders for non-insure. And underinsured motorists. That's just not fair. It's not right. Other insurance that's a runaway train, and I understand this came out of the Lahaina. Tragedy, and that is that um. We all know well that Hurricane Dora passed well to the south. It was a category four storm. And it created those winds that that exacerbated the the fires and that kind of thing. Now the now the hurricane insurance people are saying that. A storm has to be right up here in order for coverage to happen for hurricane. That's a lot of bullshit. So if you could look into those kinds of things, I think it's a runaway train.
Under questions from board members.
Noted. Hey, that's right up by a wheelhouse from CPN.
Any questions for Brett? Okay, go ahead. Cliff?
Yeah, get it back on us on the state. Uh school system, if fire allow. How many schools that? Don't have home. Because they were doing for it. Electrical. What's wrong with the old style triangle? Give the kids some responsibility back in the school. You close to the door, in case of fire, you can ring that thing. What here don't have no alarm. I was looking at that. This they have, how many years? I don't know what the state are doing. Waiting for parts coming from China? I don't know. I was talking to another. For the. One of my five five men friends, he could have put all the triangle back in the school again. Easy to maintain in. In Hawaii, electrical. Will eat you out. Every year you gotta change, upgrade and whatever in there. But a simple thing for the kids to do is responsibility. The school don't teach responsibility, let alone the parents. Put it back in the school. All the triangle. Last year I went, I was looking for the triangle. I said, wait. They were scrap iron. Everybody went electric, you know, all computer. I said, wait, they were scrap iron. Everybody went electric, you know, off computer rise. I thought it don't work in the school.
I apologize. Do you have a question?
Noted. Question is, put the thing back in the school for now. It's better than nothing.
Curious to know what other bills are still alive that relate to something system cesspoles. Get that information from me. That's okay.
You definitely got it this one.
Thanks. Questions from the public, Senator?
I have seen the uh planting uh on, on the trees and they, they look great, but what, what's the ultimate goal once they're matured? It's each school, land the demo, right? Harvest or how is that in theory?
Can't say it. In theory, we have four years to, to put together a management plan of all the concerns that have come to us, but what we want to do right now is just plant it. Uh we have, so what we ended up doing, and I'll try to get this in two minutes, but planted all the trees. As we planted all the trees, we always had a plan. Plan the whole way. What we found was, we really got so involved with those plans that have changed. Uh the plans changed to what they are today. Uh in short, management plan, we've got some churches involved in cutting all the grass. We'll have uh April twenty-second. Earth Day, twenty-second, uh Earth Day, we'll be back out there. We'll hold twice a year community events to, to go out and um maintain it on a big scale. Um but in the meantime, we've got the church cutting off grass. It'll look about nice for soon. Like just started about a month and a half ago. We've got a water system where we got a pump trailer right back there. We'll take care of that. You know, once we get to that four-year point and it basically, you know, I'm liable, like I said. So we have to put together a plan for, I mean, we have Sam a bunch of changes in bill form that we would have to do to the law to make this, I guess, as viable as possible without to answer your question in short, food is free public. So the reason why I picked this place, the wide open space, go over there. It's another part of the plan. We're not, now we're talking bike paths and stuff. Everything's come together. So all that stuff has to happen, but in four years, five years, when the things given, this is free for the community. Everybody shows up and you can pick it. Now you can get into all kinds of details. Well, if they're picking and taking the swammy to sell and all, you know, stuff we're not going to worry about, we're going to plan right now. So we're trying to put as many on the ground here, trying to extend it into Ohi Manu, extend it down Hollywood side. I'm probably the ones at this point. So but, but the battles that we have to face just right here in the right now um is so, so great that would we put together a potential plan that would stick four years from now? Probably not. That, that's where it is. So the idea is it's absolutely free to anybody who comes by. We just have to manage it properly and make it accessible.
The official the other questions for the Senator. I just want to thank being here in person. That means great.
Well, of course, yeah, I am able to get here often, but you know, session's winding down. Got a bunch of stuff tomorrow, but we were out here, so I figured I'd bring the whole team.
Okay, we're going to move on to Representative Lisa Kita Gallo cannot join us tonight. She's busy in the legislature, but uh Arda Eisenberg is here, Chancellor from the Community College.
You're online? Name is online?
I am online. Sorry about that. Took a minute to get the unmute to work. Um Allah May Kaku. Thank you so much for giving time tonight. I have a few updates. The first is that I'm very thankful how the Castle Foundation has provided us with funding for another two years of our Ho'olei Scholarship. So all of our seniors on this side of the island graduating from public schools, they fill out their FAFSA and we are unable to cover them with financial aid for their tuition. Whatever is not covered will be covered through this scholarship. So every student residing on this side of the Ko'olau should be able to attend college without the financial burden of tuition. So I'm really thankful to Castle Foundation for helping us to build that model of college access. Then we also have um our Halau Hikili Middle College has a few seats left. This is a high school class located on our campus through Kailua High School. So for Kahalouu residents, they would have to do a GE for Kailua with Halau Hikili as a reason. And they will be taking classes both for their high school degree and our Hawaiian Knowledge Innovation Certificate, which is Hawaiian Studies, Business Entrepreneurship and Computer Science, but very applied, website design, social media. And if they work really hard their senior year, they can actually graduate with their associate's degree. They get all the benefits of high school and all the benefits of being on our campus. They take part regularly in our events. It's been really fun to have them. Okay, so that's all my happy news. I led with the good. I have some sad news and um it, it relates to legislature this year. We had three incarcerated positions in the state budget under UH specifically for community colleges when we're designated. We're the only college in the uni, in the University of Hawaii system that is serving incarcerated populations with credit-bearing education that leads to a degree. Most others are non-credit or um can lead to like one credit. Where we have the AA liberal arts with a business certificate and psychosocial development certificate. At the women's facility at Halava, we have Ahe, AA Hawaiian Studies. We also have coursework at the youth facility. These three positions we've relied on for nine years at this point, we have been on grant fu, eight years, sorry, eight years of grant funding to provide this. We have become the only University of Hawaii second chance Pell site, so we can award financial aid to pay for instruction. But we need that support staff to onboard recruit and support through that. It's on the House version, but not the Senate version. So any support that you can give to help those positions come back would be really appreciated. We're really ignoring this population. We're ignoring the Pidina that they need and the growth in skills and education. So reentry and post-release becomes a successful experience for themselves, their families, their communities in our state. Students having had just one class with us have a fourteen percent recidivism rate, one class, fourteen percent. The overall recidivism rate for our incarcerated system in Hawaii is fifty-four percent. It's a forty percent decrease from one college class. It's a lot of money saved to the states. Not only in how much it costs per day to house the incarcerated, but also in all the other um they generate tax revenue because they're gainfully employed. There's less um social services because their, their children have guardians again. Lots of other snowballing potential benefits. So we're really saddened by that. But we're hoping that since it's still in the House during the conference period, it might come back. Okay, that's my whole report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any board questions? Public questions? Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're moving on to Flip, Iyo Avey Regional. I don't have any. Uh US Congress Representative Jill TeFuda, is there a representative for her? Christie, County Oe County Oe Bay Marine Corps Base Representative. Kristy Kaul.
Good evening, Board Chair. Kristy Kaul Hiva with Marine Corps Base Hawaii. A few things that I would like to share, um some good upcoming events that the community can come and participate with. One of them is on April thirteenth, it is the Weed Warrior. If there's ever an opportunity, I know that on all of our side, we have our own kulianna to take care of when it comes to restoration. But if you wanted an opportunity to come onto the base to assist with um some of their um removal of invasive species, it is open. You do need to get ahold of the Environmental Department. And I can provide that phone number. I don't have it off the top of my head. It is on the MCBH webpage. Um but if it's difficult to find, please reach out and I will get it for you. You need to just call them and let them know that you want to come. It is really a nice experience because you get to go into locations that aren't always open, even to um the military members who live on base, don't even get to have access to some of the locations where they're going to go and um and work. Um couple of upcoming things. Senator Favela had put forth a resolution requesting military installations to fly the state flag. I did not know, but PTRF on Hawaii already does, and so does um Indopac. They already fly the state flag, but this is not so at every installation. The Marine Corps Base is moving forward to do this at, you know, to show respect and um acknowledge Senator Favela's um request. We're going to have a ceremony. We are be sending out invitations to each of the neighborhood board chairs along the um the Pola Popo post. And if there are any other members of the board who would like to come, um please let me know and I will get your name on that list. And we're also moving forward with um hosting the um uh Hui Nalu's Regatta on July fourteenth. This is kind of a big ask this year because of RIMPAC and the changes in the design, meaning more aircraft are expected to be here. And that poses a space problem, not enough space on the flight line to um have everybody. But they are looking at creative ways to have this happen. Because I told them it's the best course. There. Um also, this as a reminder, it is a RIMPAC year. Do expect to have more air traffic, more air noise. I know personally how irritating that is. I have to hear it myself. Um as you know, the Ospreys did get clearance to fly. Um they have been doing more training recently due to um an upcoming deployment. Um and they do have a lot of hours that they have to put in, many of those um are nighttime, unfortunately. Um also, Bellows Camping in Waimanalo will be closed for turtle nesting. Our environmental department has requested through the city and county that during the weekend when that portion of um Big Tab is open to the community, uh the camping for the summer during May through September, but will be open for Labor Day weekend, will be closed and it is due to turtle nest. And that's all I have.
Ian has a question?
Hi Kristy. Uh real quick, I had a group of Hala, um Laualala weaving practitioners approach me about wanting to um care for and, and be able to um, you know, harvest the hala leaves around. They've been coming to my house. They know about the many hala trees along the Back Gate Road and down towards Fort Hasi that are um in need of love. And would you be the person that I should hook them up with to be able to maybe perhaps um take a kulianna on helping to care for some of these hala trees?
Yes, I think that would be wonderful. I myself have noticed how much fall to the ground and I'm like, I can be a great basket or a hat or a purse and then send it for seven hundred dollars.
Not, not to mention you need many, what, over two thousand baskets for the evening that are there? So that might be helpful as well.
Yes, yeah. Please have them reach out. Um if you don't have, you've got my contact info.
Yeah, I got. To ask, you know, officially.
Thank you very much. Matt Curran.
Thank you.
Wahoo Pentathlon, tell us what's going to happen.
And thank you for so the Wahoo Pentathlon is a hundred and thirty-five mile race. Uh it's just around the island, starts at program. It's nice and short. Uh fortunate event that passed through the neighborhood uh will be the run portion entering highway to go over to the park. Send it over to Parker. Okay, gotcha. No worries. Uh so last year we finished at Twiho Beach Park. It was pretty ground farm um by this board, by others. Reputation was still over uh Beach Park, so that's it. And the next concern was there uh maybe some concern with road lanes and waterway and rural regional park shoulder gets a bit narrow. Um athletes will be extremely spread out. So the race is starting at six AM. By the time athletes get to this portion, it's going to be about eight to eight thirty in the morning.
So what day is that?
That'll be Saturday, August third. So by the time they get to that, well, congestion point, be very uh low amount of athletes, so over a span of four hours, there might be seventy-five athletes passing through there. So there's really not a time. Once athletes finish up, they will then just reach that exchange point at the Kulo Regional exchange point. We will like anticipate a maximum of seventy-five to a hundred people there at one time, mostly less. But again, the hours are going to be between the faster athletes eight-thirty in the morning um to the slower athletes at one PM. Uh which, and the max peak time will be around ten AM at that point. Uh that includes athletes and volunteers. Um there is a one PM cutoff for athletes. So let's just say an athlete is pretty slow out of water into the run and they're pushing noon or one o'clock, especially when, you know, each time comes up for uh just a lot of people, we are pulling those athletes from the race. So if they are past one o'clock, they have that one o'clock point, we are pulling them from after one to one thirty, that's our clear out point. Race is starting in the Digan Kailua uh boat ramp. So once we are, once all athletes are past, we are picking everything up and
Any board questions about the Wahoo Pentathlon? A couple of questions. Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Preston Burke, you hear from have this on the agenda for the crosswalks on Hui Vastree. There are four of them right now. Not here. Any online? Okay, we move along to um community concerns. I haven't, is anybody here specific two-minute concern that they'd like to share with the board? That possibly go on the agenda next time for action? Why don't you come up first? State your name and what you're no? No, I'd like you to come up. You can come on.
Priscilla, um I was here at the last meeting. I did email the chair last. Did you folks get that email? The, the question is, did you get the email in regards to, oh, then I guess.
Regarding to what? Just tell us.
So of Hui Manu Place. Right. So right where they built four-seven, four-two-seven, I want to say, is the nearest um address. But there is a walk path with staggered board of water supply, cement boxes, and people um they park over seeded land. And what it does is it staggers it and it creates an uneven footing. So this road that connects of Hui Manu Place to Hui Umele, it's on the Malka side, right? And so everybody walks there, catches the bus, the city bus transit. And so I've seen, I mean, it's very dangerous because, because people actually park on top of the meters and it's sunk in. You have people in scooters, uh walkers, um mothers carrying their babies, walking the kina on a leash. And it's so many times that there's been close calls, right?
See Giro is ready.
Well, yeah, so there's been, and it's kind of a three-pronged concern actually, because right across the street, there's like a major transformer where Hawaiian Tel um COM and, you know, Spectrum and everything, they kind of do their business there. But I actually sent the chair pictures of the stanchions, concrete stanchions. One is already knocked over. It's supposed to protect the people. But literally the workers are sitting on a bucket, opening the transformer and they're like six to eight inches from the actual road. And I mean, it's really concerning, right? Um so that would be nice to have an actual walk path there. Number one is to create an even footing to prevent, you know, trip hazards, safety, vehicular, pedestrian, right? Give these people an opportunity to walk to and from the bus stop, you know, and not have to get all muddy and everything else. And then also to vehicles park there. So I know some good citizens try to put some signs up and say, hey, don't park here. But people are going to park there regardless, right? Um right now, the pictures that I sent to the chair, it has pit, it has cones. Spectrum put a cone there. Spectrum put a cone there, Border Water Supply put a cone there, but cones not gonna stop people from parking on top of the water meters. And it kind of affects the homeowners, right? Up where that.
So I think Giro put that.
I know I'm talking. Uh, 47419, Ahui Mono Place, yeah, and so CPR. And then right across the street is a transformer too as well, right? So I don't know, I mean, should do something about that.
So we should have some answer.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Community concern. That's the word.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, last month's meeting, uh, you had voted to have representation at the, uh, Windward Emergency Preparedness Fair on, uh, May 11th. I neglected to catch who it was that volunteered to serve, plus it's not in the minutes. Um, so I'd like to know what's going on with that. It's coming up on May 11th. And in conjunction with that, uh, you have, you, the board, has a request from, uh, the Kani Oe Neighborhood Board, their emergency preparedness chair, uh, to meet with their chair of their emergency preparedness thing to talk about, uh, pods and emergency preparedness for the communities. Um, he has gotten very act, very challenging to, uh, the PDM, Department of Emergency Management, and, um, would, would really like some support from us.
When is that?
That would entail whomever from here is willing.
Do you want to?
I can give you his information and whomever would be interested or is in charge of some kind of committee. And that gets me into a sec, well, okay. First point that I'd like you to address, is there going to be any representation from this board at the Windward Fair?
Let's see if we can answer the question. Does anybody wanna do that? Is there anybody here tonight who would like to do that?
We had a volunteer last month.
They were obviously not here. What's the second?
In conjunction with that, it, it applies to your need for, uh, representation from various districts that have not been represented. And this is a good way to advertise yourselves at this, uh, fair, that you have what you do, who you are, where you are, when you meet, and see if anybody in the community happens to be at this fair where there are hundreds of people. And thank you, you're welcome. And so I'm pushing this, you know this, Dan, okay? And I'm not gonna step back. I'm not, okay.
I'm asking the dancer.
Yes.
Would anyone, is anyone here interested in taking on that role? Because it's really important to say ask for preparation. And, uh, you've been doing it a long time. It's very good. It's worthy.
And you're supportive.
Anybody here interested?
And if you're not, at least give me some kind of information that we can present, certain community from Kahaloo can present to the public about who and what you are and what it is that you need. Okay? So that's that other, right? And, uh, in conjunction with that, I understand that the board is in tremendous transition here. And, uh, are there any working groups or working committees going on? With the board, that's a community concern.
Uh, I just wanna go back to the issue that Mark brought up. Can we, um, you know, the, the communication that went to the board chair first, um, partner chair. Communications like that, I think should go to, also go to neighbor, to Rachel folks, somehow so that those kind of communications don't get lost, just because one person. The other thing is, I think we should put that issue, Jen. Not sure what it is, but under state. But the issue relating to Hui Mono Place, that sidewalk area. That way, if we need to take action, you know, after we hear back from the city and so on. I'm gonna ask Rachel to just quick note of that for next month's agenda. Hui Mono Place sidewalk. And if we're willing to come and give her the exact address and define it, just spun up and.
If you don't mind, I could just forward the email. That, maybe that's good. Thank you.
Very nice. We'll try to get, um, in addition to the mayor's response. Uh, moving on to board business, let's.
Want to do, just throw out, there was a article in Civil Beat, um, which is yesterday about this woman that used to run the, s- some part of the division of, of Department of Agriculture and, um, her, her supposed alliance with the nursery industry is preventing us from being able to prevent little fire ants spread from, from plants and so forth. And I think that's something that we have to start talking about, asking these people and maybe they don't understand to what extent we're going to, to combat fire ants on this island and that it's coming from other places.
Community concerns, resident community concerns. See, here, we have this, but have some. Ed?
Thank you. Um, hi, my name is Joe. I run around, you know, about little fire ants all the time. It's really fun. I recommend everyone try it on the weekends. It's a good time. Um, I wanted to share a couple of updates. So everyone is doing their best right now, but what I think people are finding out is that little fire ants are spread a lot further than there's current staff capacity for. Um, and that's causing a couple of pickups. I think that really important things, uh, like if you think that the government should be handling the little fire ant treatment, uh, uh, it's really, it's really essential that there is a coordinated group that will be able to withstand like family emergencies or people getting new jobs or like, uh, some nonprofit has a fundraiser or something like that. The coordinating agency really needs to be a government agency to do this. Um, I know that everybody here, next with everybody, but we really need a lot of strong advocacy for, uh, financial support from the city and county of Honolulu, which does not match Bowie's, uh, Bowie Invasive Species Council gets significant support from their county and Wahoo can do the same. And it would be really helpful. Um, I think that's, that's it. Uh, there's more of them in our community. If you guys have questions about little fire ants, I have maybe answers.
And I have a box of suggestions here on the floor. Anyone want to take one of them? You can have them.
Thank you so much. Yeah, test your yards. There's plenty of people that help you with treatment, uh, and understanding little fire ants, but no one is gonna test your yard but you.
I'm sorry, Ken Leviser.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, the, somehow we got a new version of, um, the, uh, WebEx. And, uh, it took me 15 minutes to actually sign into this meeting. And if I'm having that problem, others are unable to attend virtually until they get it straightened out. Some may have e- even given up. Uh, but, uh, if, if, I ha- I only use it for this meeting and so I didn't know about it for a month. And, uh, if others use it more regularly, then they did get the update. So if, if we can get notified, uh, with the minutes, if there is an anticipated update to WebEx, it helps us with our, our participation. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to board business. The proposed Kulu Regional Park maintenance facility, severe improvements is on our agenda. Is there someone who wanted to talk about that? I have no idea what it's about, but I can guess. That? No. Okay, the second item is sub-district seat apt to at large. John, you wanna give a second update on that?
This was just a notion. I know some other boards have at-large positions. Given the response, given the response we've gotten this evening, um, I think we're good. I mean, I like the idea of districts, you know, being represented by people in those sub-districts being, um, having people from those sub-districts representing some districts. So, um, you know, this is strictly just to put an idea out there, something to think about, but I'm not proposing anything.
Item C, approval of minutes. Somebody have a motion for it? The minutes has amended. Any corrections to the minutes? Have a second to approve the minutes as amended? If you'd like to. Your name is misspelled, but it was something concerned. Can we vote on that? It's a piece of work. Of you. If I keep count, you're where at nine, John? All those in favor of approving the minutes at large? Anonymous, so six, how about a body?
Hart did put his hand up.
Eight. Seven, and then incident. I have another item, meeting date, time, location. We make a second, let me stay here and. Now, community announcements, you know, implement. This is an announcement.
I know, they're gonna announce. I know that, uh, that you would please, uh, participate in the Windward Emergency Preparedness Fair on, uh, what is it? May 11th, Saturday, uh, between 10 and 2. I would like you to join with the, uh, Kani Oe District Board, uh, try and develop a relationship with them as well. On emergency preparedness.
We have a Ken, Ian.
I'm sorry.
Ian, go ahead.
Oh, wait, oh, oh, another announcement about that. Ken, are you participating? Ken, Professor, are you participating?
No, I'm, I'm not gonna be present. I'm, I'm assisting in the background, but I will not be present.
Wanted them to fly us stuff.
Ian, I saw your hand up. Were you?
It was actually on behalf of Alice, who's online and, and had an issue. She wanted to speak on, on about the community issues. Thanks, Rachel, for saying you backed me up on that.
Uh, can I be heard now? Hello? Okay. Uh, I just wanted to mention about the, um, uh, about Kahakili and Kam Highway, when you get off the, the 60 bus, um, and try to get on the crosswalk, uh, going towards Kani Oe, there is absolutely no way to safely be on that area, in that area. The crosswalk is right next to the right-hand turn lane for the cars and you're, the cars are right on top of you. There's no ease way. And it's been that way for quite a while. I know there's a lot of repair being done, so, you know, um, i- it may be difficult to do that, but I thought I'd mention it 'cause, like I said, it's been there for quite a while and, and there could be a nasty, nasty accident there.
Comments by anybody?
John, can I, can I just? Alice, if you wouldn't mind, um, you have my email. If you could email me that concern, I'd like to follow up on that, I think with, uh, both DTS and DOT.
Yeah, I'll do that, John. Thanks.
We have one note from the governor's representative with respect to the drainage inlets and shoulders near 475. They have the highway of state DOT, the cost that they have brought with a plan to install a sway up. It's probably a issue that you finished the design, worked, you know, to finalize. I have no idea if that's that. You can't have that responsibility. Are there any other items that require a motion from the board on that?
That's a property, Ka'alaia, Amaiwi.
No idea.
No, I was, that's over there, that property over there is developed many years ago. But I, I guess, the developer didn't know what was in that area. In Ka'alaia, in that housing area, you got, there's no, there's no river. It's all springs in that property. It, and it didn't kept the springs. A lot of the water drains coming from under the property. You know? You get a lot of spring water in Ka'alaia. But Pulama Road.
But anyway, so Cliff, would you remember to bring that up when the governor's representative comes next time? I just have, have no response for it.
So it's Donna Cole. She came to the last or the second to the last meeting and there's, there's runoff water in, in a big rainfall that comes across from the Maoka driveway. It comes across the highway and jumps onto her driveway and goes down. And I actually went and found a drain, drain that's there. And I think if they were able to tap into the drain and put a drain inlet by her driveway, then that would solve the situation.
Okay.
John has one last.
Ian, you're still online. Uh, the, uh, work that's being done Kai Side by Pulama Road, Ka'alaia. Did we get an answer on what was going on there?
No, I never got any answer. Um, I, I can go back through my emails to see if I missed one in, since yesterday. But, um, I, I did get a response saying we'd follow up on that. So let me check with you on that. Yeah, there was work being done in the stream there, Makai of Pulama Road and Bako actually out in the ocean doing work right there. So that was a concern that was brought up.
And Lisa Kidagawa's office was gonna be looking at that. We didn't get anything back from her yet. Okay. Okay, thanks.
There are no. There are no other items that require a motion or action on our part, the meeting is now adjourned.
Good job, good job, Dan.
Thank you.
Ahuiho.